Looking out for each other.
I could forget.
It is nine AM and I'm going to call the meeting of the County Board of Commissioners to order. Brenda, would you lead us? So number two on the agenda is call for public comment. So this is members of the public want to make comment for items that are not in the agenda that we wouldn't act on their space at the end toward the end of our agenda. Or they can call if they're here in person, or they can call in by telephone. Number six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Number three, are there any conflict of interest items for any commissioners on the agenda?
No, no.
None for me. Number four. Ode to chain action to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Schwer. Any comments or corrections? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's say no. And then motion carries. Minutes from our last meeting, March twenty eighth.
So moved.
So will be approved by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Will say no. That motion carries. And number six, monthly reports.
She comes. Way to sneak in there, Tom.
So yeah, early bird. You don't want to spend any longer than you have to.
Flag was just waving as you know.
I'm just excited to be here.
Okay.
Good morning.
Uh, good morning, um, from the Veteran Service Office. Metrics for the month. We have one hundred and sixty eight open claims that we're working. Seventy two that have been completed year to date. Uh, for the month of March, uh, we increased the monthly compensation for veterans or their dependents by. Four thousand and sixty six dollars. Year to month total would be thirty two thousand and ninety eight dollars. Retro payments for the month of March. Fifteen thousand, six hundred and twenty nine. Retro payments for a year to date is two thou- two hundred. Twenty five thousand and one hundred and twenty eight dollars. One veteran transport for March and one currently scheduled for April. Um, with Jay adding into the office there. He brings another skill set from his recent job. So he's been able to help veterans and current currently serving military people. With some issues dealing with military pay and the military retirement pay system. So we've been kind of added that on to our. Able to assist veterans and and currently serving people with that because. Sometimes they do have a tie to VA benefits from that standpoint. So. Good addition there.
It's a big deal, yeah.
Yep. Also, uh, last month, uh, I mentioned we were looking into old records. Uh, due to the honor of the pact act. We've currently identified actually nine because we just talked about one this morning. Um, that are the more likely it's the dependents, the widows. That might be eligible for some new benefits for honor the pact act. These are called what they call dependent indemnity claims. And this is possible benefits for a veteran that died of a service connected disability or condition. Uh, mostly these are what you would look at, it would be the presumptive conditions. That, you know, we know about age and order, but there's been a lot also added for Gulf War post nine eleven veterans. So, uh, within that we have one that we've already submitted. It came back successfully completed. So that was a benefit to that widow that she's now receiving. We have three that have been submitted. And our pending decision and we currently have four that we're working and we'll probably start the fifth one. Today. So that's a, that's a big plus going back there from that standpoint and for those. Veterans and their and their dependents. Um, the future events, American Legion is working their Memorial Day plans. While the Legion Riders are working to have an event on Flag Day, I believe. And then the VFW is going to post the, um. Uh, the flags at Mount Hope and Saint Mary's here. Um, I think that's on the twenty sixth of May, starting at one o'clock. I'll reiterate that again in May, so we have a good date on that. I'm still looking at planning an information meeting, probably going to shoot sometime in in, um, June. I was looking at possibly during the week, but now I'm kind of thinking that maybe I might shift it to a a Saturday from that standpoint.
Just like invite all the veterans you can find for.
Yep. Um, they've been doing them around the state and we've been talking. I've talked with Ashley Alvarado. She works out at the. Um, Department of Labor for veterans, disabled veterans and stuff like that. And I've been in touch with a couple of people out of the VA in Sioux Falls. They would like to have an event, so I'm. Talking, toying with the idea of just having it on a Saturday as opposed to trying to have it during a weekday. That way. Uh, people that are working and stuff like that and so. Any questions?
Just, um, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, just, uh. You said, I think it was per capita compensation. It was like a three thousand dollar and a two thousand dollar for you. Can you, I missed that.
No, per capita for two and three. I don't. I talked about, I talked about the the monthly, um, compensation.
That was it, okay.
For the veterans or dependents.
That's countywide.
That is countywide.
Alright.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that was about four thousand dollars. And then, um. For the month of March, we increased and then about thirty two thousand for.
Thank you.
Here today. Okay, thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
All right. April, well, um, we have sixty five youth from across the state enrolled in our virtual kid care. Um, it's put on by our six, um, four H. Youth program advisors from the northeast corner. Uh, we meet virtually every Monday, so we've got two weeks in already. Um, we're wrapping up four H clover buds this month. I I did have a total of forty eight clover buds. Um, we are going to have a July space clover bud camp. In so in July, so they'll register for that and they can bring their friends to that too. Um, this is the last month of archery and and BB gun and air pistol and our rifle before the state shoot. So kids are. Busily trying to qualify for the state shoot. A lot of them have already registered for the state shoot. That's going to be held in Fort Pierce. Um, the instructors are also making plans for, um, disciplines this summer at the range south of town. So they're. Trying to expand the program and get out there with information on shooting sports. Um, we held a little four H leaders meeting, a livestock meeting last night to schedule achievement days and make plans, um, with getting judges and things like that. So volunteers. Um, April does have a sewing workshop, a poultry and a woodcraft day. So there's lots of opportunities for youth to do that other things. Um, besides working with their clubs and shooting sports. And then I'll be traveling to Millbank next Wednesday for a Northeast Region Network Day. So that'll be in Millbank. Um, we'll get to see their new building again. Some I've seen it already. I've judged up there, but some people haven't seen it yet either. And. This month marks the twentieth year I've been a four H advisor.
Wow.
So.
Congratulations.
Where does time go? I don't know. Now I have alumni's kids coming to the four H, so.
All those lives you've been.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
So the next twenty years will probably go just as fast as.
Probably. That's just four H advisor time. That doesn't include my secretary. All right.
Any questions for? They're doing good.
All right. Thank you.
Come on down.
Morning, Tony.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let's see.
Morning.
Yes, um, I sent you a typed up report and then also, um, stats for January through March. Um, it's not all the way through March, just as I ended the report as of. Um, last Thursday, but it's pretty close. Um. So in January through, um, March, we issued out one thousand five hundred and forty nine food packages for a total of a hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety three dollars and eighty six cents. Um, our caseload continues to remain at about five hundred, um, averaging over the last three months was five sixteen, which is pretty consistent for us. Um. Our dietitian team lead is back in the office for maternity leave. She came back in. February, I believe, and she just oversees the region as far as, um, she doesn't do, um. Office appointments, but she just oversees the region and helps with WIC issues and things like that. Um, we are going to be starting a virtual service coming up. It's called Doximi. So we'll be able to do telehealth appointments with our clients. Um, we're hoping, I think all of our staff have been trained on it. Um, we're hoping to start implementing that next month so that we'll be able to virtually talk with our clients rather than just doing phone calls. So. We're kind of excited about that, getting some of the equipment like cameras and things in our office. Um, immunization rates are down a little bit, which is totally normal for this time of year. We do still have flu shots available though. Um, so people are able to continue to come in and get flu shots if they would like. And we started getting some of the Russian and Ukraine records from the school. So we've, um, been interpreting some of those and passing those back on to the schools. Um, our waiver that we had in place that allowed participants to buy alternative formulas ended, um, March first. So we're back just to our Similac contract. Um, that, uh, participants are still able to use just for that. So. Um, we're doing depression screenings on all of our first time appointments with our moms and all of our postpartum moms. So that kind of gives us something to kind of compare to. Um, prenatal and, um, postpartum. Um, we're done with our school contracts for the current year, uh, school contracts for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty fours due, um, April seventh. So we're still wrapping up on. Um, reaching out to the schools in all of Cottington County, whether they've had a contract with us in the past. Um, we're going to go to Cottington connects, um, on April eighteenth. Um, so we will have a booth there. We're also going to help out with some of the poverty, um. Simulation and things like that. So, um, I also brought with me Kaya. She is our LPN. She actually started with us just a little over a year ago. She just hasn't been able to come to the commissioners meeting. So. I think all the new staff have now come with me, so I brought her along as well.
You can watch it on YouTube.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, we are also traveling to, um, our regional meeting in Huron on the twentieth. Um, and that is able, our clerical are also able to come to that, but I do need, um, permission for travel for them to come. Um, if that is okay, we'll be doing, um. We will actually be participating in a poverty simulation there as well, whereas on the eighteenth, we're going to be helping host one. Um, so the clerical are interested in coming to that, that will be in Huron. Um, and it will be just, um, eight to five. Um, so through normal working hours, but I do need permission to, um, if that is okay, if that they are able to come.
How have we handled that in the past with, I can't remember.
When is it?
It's on April eighteenth or April twentieth, sorry, April twentieth.
Yeah, just.
Travel, normal travel request.
Okay, travel request. Okay, okay. Okay, perfect. Um, and then the other thing I had talked a little bit with Brenda, um, we are interested in starting a Cottington County, um, Community Health Facebook page for our clients. Um, it would be on hat behalf of Cottington County. Um, it won't have anything to do with necessarily the Department of Health. But mainly just to target our, um, clientele for like when we have office closures, um, if we have any events that are running out through the week. Um, we won't be doing any like communicating with our clients or anything like that through it. It would just be sharing. Um, like in August is breastfeeding month, so we would be sharing some of the WIC breastfeeding information in the South Dakota Department of Health, like. Influenza rates and when we have flu shots available and things like that too. So, um, I know we had kind of talked about potentially discussing that later.
It wouldn't cost us anything.
Would not cost anything.
You guys would just set it up and maintain.
Yep, I and I would maintain it. Um, so it would just be, and like I said, we wouldn't, um, the Roberts County Community Health has one. So I mean, if you guys wanted to look at it, you can just search Roberts County Community Health. Um, but they basically just share information from like the South Dakota WIC page and the Department of Health page, and also like if our office closes or things like that, so that we can. Um, kind of continue to inform our clients on like.
Resource.
Yeah, a monthly basis if we have like an event that's coming up or like, um, when the food drive dies, things, the diaper drive, we can kind of share those types of things with them too on that. So.
I like it.
I don't think we need to make, take action on it.
Okay.
That seems.
You're okay if we do that. Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Sounds good. Any questions on anything?
Uh, as far as outreach and into the, uh, schools and county, how many? Is there any you had, you get to all of them?
Um. Yeah, so I reach out to all of the schools in Cottington County, whether they're, um, public or private. It doesn't matter. Um, we, when I first started, we only had three schools that would, um. Come on, and now, um, the last two years I have recruited two more, so I, um, do up to five. And that ranges from, some of them are just like hearing and vision, and then our largest school does hearing, vision. I talk about, um, puberty, hygiene. I do health assessments on kindergarten and fifth graders. I do scoliosis checks. Um, we do tobacco, social, emotional health. So we put in some big hours at some of those schools.
It's a, it's a good opportunity for these.
Yeah.
Area schools, and I certainly hope that they take advantage of it.
Yes.
So.
Yes, yeah. It's been good.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, number seven on the agenda. Um, is discussion possible action to approve an offer by the town of South Shore to purchase property in the town of South Shore. So I understand we have. Mr. Dolan here with us.
Yes, hi. Thanks for joining me today.
Take your time. Introduce yourself and.
Uh, Jamie Dolan, Mayor of South Shore. Um. Open it don't snow anymore. I'm ready for it to be done, so.
Yeah, if you give us an overview, what what you're thinking and it's in, it's in our packets.
Yes.
Um.
We have a piece of property in South Shore, um, about seven, eight years ago, had some building structures on it. Nobody's lived there for quite some time. Uh, I think the residents at the time that owned it. Um. Down in Texas, I believe, and the original owner ended up passing away. And so his widow and, uh, was taking care of things and. Uh, really didn't. Um, so we, uh, the building became unsafe and a hazard, so we, the city tore it down on our expense. And you can see some of the expenses we have there from over the years.
Mm-hmm.
And now it's apparent that they were, um. Not taking care of their taxes. So that's where we're at today with it and hopes to get it back to try to redeem our money off it and hopes to. Put some housing back on it. And our, uh. Maybe a little infrastructure on our. Water plan coming up. So that's our plan right now is for sure, one house. Maybe two.
Okay, and so what, what do you, uh?
We are looking to see if you would surplus this to us today. Um. So the town has the opportunity to take that over.
Okay.
And just. Got an update on kind of the cost there, um, of one thousand twenty six, twenty four. Would be our bid for that today.
This is a. Twenty six, twenty four?
Uh, yes, one thousand twenty six, twenty four.
This is a, uh. Property that the county already has.
We took, yeah, we took, um.
Possession.
Deed of it, yeah, text deed of it, um. Yeah, when did we take? I guess last year. Um, I, I think if I.
Yeah, it was just recent that it happened. And so that's why we. Um, have been talking, um.
So. Yeah, just to, just to clarify here. So we have, um, the, the back taxes were nine hundred, I'm sorry, nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty one dollars and forty two cents. But then there was, uh, an assessment reduction because that building was gone. I guess that's basically why.
Mm-hmm.
Leaving, um, six hundred. Eighty six dollars and sixty seven cents, but the cost of taking deed. Uh, that the county incurred, that's three hundred nine dollars and fifty seven cents, which then brings it to nine hundred ninety six dollars and twenty four cents. And then I'm guessing you're adding thirty, thirty.
Dollar recording fees.
Yeah, okay, so that.
Mentioned.
That's including the thirty dollar recording fee.
Yeah, so that would take care of everything and everybody. That is listed for, um. Meeting part of the taxes would get their monies and we would take care of you guys getting your monies that way too.
So. This, this I understand.
Carol needs to be in on she's discussion or.
Yeah, she's explaining it to us.
Yep, she's the one just came in with me. We've been dealing with her. She's the one that gave the updated, uh, pricing on.
Make sure everything's correct on that.
He just gave that to me.
Yeah, she gave, she stepped in, she wrote on the same thing to me. But so the way I understand it, we can basically, we could accept. South Shore's offer, or we could put it up for auction. And then we have an auction on the courthouse steps like we do for some pieces of property. In other cases, we've, we've done it both ways depending on the situation. So. Um, let's, let's see if Carol's available and then if you guys have any questions, that's how I understand it from some of Carol's emails to us. So.
Okay, so what? What is the total bid? Cause.
Uh, so. One thousand twenty six, twenty four.
And that, and that includes that thirty dollar recording fee that you.
Correct.
That you mentioned in your offer. Okay. Okay, thanks. Yeah, could you? People want to talk.
The town of South Shore is just looking to clean. We got a few more properties that are going to be coming into this and. Uh, we're looking to clean things up and try to get, um, some new housing. Um, better the property values, everything.
Right, right.
This property's been sitting vacant for. Oh, man. I believe twenty years.
Yep.
Probably, so it's just. Been totally virtually doing nothing for anyone.
Morning, Carol.
But I was, Carol, I was just trying to explain. So, you know, as you explained, I think in an email to us. If you could maybe go into a little bit more detail. So the options would be either auction. You know, we could just keep it, I guess, auction it or accept South Shore's offer. Uh, that right now, I think.
Right, those are, those are pretty much your three choices. Um, I know in the past county has, um. Transfer property to municipalities within. County, the county, see the county. Um, the one that comes to mind is, um, Paul Larson had contacted Charlie about a piece of property over in Henry. And, um. Essentially. When, um. If the board were to make a sale, the, the minimum price they have to cover. Is, um. Basically the costs. It costs at an absolute minimum and then the taxes and the taxes on this one. On his property or on, on the Fenny Smith property, there were two assessments that were set up in. Twenty, excuse me, in twenty nineteen, from nineteen to twenty. Um. If you look at your printout, there's a value, there's a tax amount due on that one of nine thousand four oh six eleven. And those assessments, there were two assessments added that year. One was for a demolition of a, uh, building. That had was becoming a hazard. That was seven thousand one hundred and forty that difference. Balance and then, um, mowing, we mowing assessment of a hundred and fifty dollars. When the county takes steam. Unless it is a special assessment, which is for like infrastructure, road, curb and gutter sidewalk, whatever. Like the city water town does, they'll go out like over a ten year period. Those are special assessments. These, um, are nuisance assessments. They will slip off like any other creditor when the county takes steam to it. So, um. In essence, those are, those are gone. So that's why we're sort of dealing with, and like I said, this is all board discretion. I'm just telling you what the numbers are.
Yeah, true.
Um, the balance of the taxes after we take the assessments out is six eighty six, sixty seven. Um, the cost for us to go take indeed, serving everybody in publications was three oh nine fifty seven. So, um, those two amounts minimum is nine ninety six, twenty four. And it's going to cost us, which I didn't think about till I was visiting here with Jamie earlier. There's going to be a recording fee within trance, if you choose to, to record the deed. If we go to auction, when somebody makes a bids a price, we collect that price plus the recording fee at the auction. Or when they come up to pay us, you guys conduct the auction, then they come up and pay us. That way, when we're done, if the board approves the approves the sale of the property and they do their quitclaim deed, we can record that right away. And that's because in the past, we've had issues where the deed didn't get recorded. So. That, that's a change to there. So I didn't. In some of the numbers you guys have, I did not give you the thirty dollars and I apologize for that. I was, uh. Uh, forgot about the recording fee.
Before you came, um, yeah. Mr. Dolan asked, uh, the thirty dollars to the offer. So you just kind of included that in there. So.
Right, he was going over his agreement. It talks about additional fees. I said, oh, the recording fee. And so I apologize for that. I should have had that on.
Mr. Chair. I move that, uh, we accept the bid of ten. Twenty six, twenty four from South Shore.
So.
Bird in the hand is a lot better than a bird in bush.
I'll second the motion.
So we got a motion by Johnson, second by Van Dusen. Any other questions or discussion?
Can I? Can I ask a quick, quick question? Um. Just for the order of things, my question was, um. Have you guys declared this surplus previously or is that going to be a part of your discussion today? Cause I, it, it's county property right now, and before you make the sale, you have to declare it surplus. So I don't know if that needs to be added to your.
That wasn't, it's, it doesn't have that specific language in the agenda, but.
I apologize.
You know, I think.
I'll certainly answer that motion.
Well, what? I think it's based to that separate, yeah.
Okay. So can we make that motion without it being on the agenda today?
Well, I think it's. We've done other.
I think it's probably, I think it's.
Sort of.
I think it's probably understood, so I think it's probably okay. I mean, what do you think? I mean, um, in. My opinion, I mean, it's, it's obvious what we, what the, what the outcome is going to be. So.
Unless we put it back on next week, we know what it's going to be. If we made a decision, you want to put that on the agenda, I don't know if you're going to have to come back. Yes, that's up to you guys, whatever you want.
I don't think you would have to come back, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of comfortable with, with, uh.
It being a part of the discussion.
Yeah, being part of the discussion because it's clear what the intent is for this piece of property is what we're discussing. So.
Surplus at first before you make the move.
Sure.
Okay, so let's, um.
I amend your motion.
Why don't you just amend your motion?
I'll amend, I'll amend my motion to, uh, accept it as a surplus property.
To declare it surplus?
Yeah.
So a motion by Johnson to declare this property surplus.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Second by Van Dusen. Any discussion on declaring on that motion? So declaring that property surplus.
I'm assuming, JB, that. City Council has. Agreed with all these fees.
Yep. Yep, um, our attorney helped us, uh, with all, with all this and everybody's in agreement and that's fine. We pushed forward today to ask for this. You're all good.
Okay, so any other, any other discussion on that, on the surplus motion? Okay, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Will say no. Okay, so now, now we're to the point of, of, um, whether or not we want to accept the offer, uh, from South Shore. So.
And that's the original motion.
Okay, so. Well, you, you admitted your motion, so let's start over it. So let's start over again.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the offer, uh, from South Shore. And that offer was in the mouth of, I just pushed my page over.
One thousand. Two thousand twenty six, twenty four.
One thousand twenty six, twenty four, and that would include the thirty dollar fee as well.
Yeah, that's.
And I will second that motion.
We got a motion by Johnson and second by Van Dusen to set South Shore's offer at one thousand. Uh, twenty six dollars and twenty four cents, which includes the thirty dollar recording fee. So. Any other, okay, any other discussion on that one? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Will say no. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol, for coming in. Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Uh. Number eight on the discussion on the allocation of national opioid settlement funds. If you could lead us in here, Madam Auditor.
Yes. All right, so we have received, um, a dollar amount of nine thousand, two hundred and twenty nine dollars and twenty four cents. In that opioid settlement, which, uh, none of those dollars have been spent yet. I did include in the, in your packets, um. Some of the. Possible, uh, ways that you can spend those dollars. It's quite likely. Um, I will just add to that. Uh, there was a news article that Pier, the city of Pier had received, uh, one of eighteen of their settlements. And they have decided to turn it over to their capital area counseling services where psychiatric, mental health nurse practitioner. Um, individual will be used to treat those who have opioid use disorders and support those who are in recovery. So that's just one. Of the areas that it can be used for, just as an example. So you have some time, um. I would suggest maybe talking it over with the sheriff, state's attorney, get some of their input on how it might best. Maybe there's things within our county. Uh, the welfare office or such even in the, with the jail, you know, with inmates or, or.
Uh, the welfare office or such even in the, with the jail, you know, with inmates or, or that sort of thing that. Just start those discussions that a way of that we could be utilizing these funds.
So that amount was nine thousand.
Nine thousand two twenty-nine, twenty-four.
So this is a uh, kind of like, I guess, we're more or less likely better from a class action suit where. How we just local government's got some money from uh.
Is that a yearly settlement?
No, I, I think this is the amount, this one time, we had two payments and um, yeah, it was a one time deal and you had to uh apply for it. So. Which we did and we received that.
Helped counties, um, you know, for their awareness that they could, they could.
We need a vote and accept that?
No, it's just, just information.
Well, I, I, I think maybe we could involve, you know, law enforcement and uh welfare office, maybe HSA.
Attorney, yep.
Maybe HSA if they have some ideas. Uh, but that's quite a length, lengthy list, but the idea is somehow you're, you're dealing with the opioid problem.
Makes sense to put the money back into the counseling involved in that as well.
And I would mention that Carrie Johnston is on the agenda for next week, uh, going to come up and visit with you folks. So. Might be an opportunity to visit with her at that point.
So whichever, whichever uh agency would wind up with some of these funds that would be listed as a one-time fund.
Yeah, it's just a one-time, yeah, it's, it's a, you know, it's a basically kind of like a, a class action suit settlement. I mean, that's kind of how I think of it. I don't know if that's technically what it was in this case, but you know, with all these strings attached with that. So, yeah.
Yes, I said in our first report, since we hadn't spent any yet, but.
Okay, all right. Any, any, you, you can see the list there. Um, any, any other comments? I'm. Thinking that uh we can each talk to, you know, for a liaison for one of the offices, say welfare or the shares will, state's attorney, whatever, we'll, we'll talk to them and start a discussion here. On this. All right. Number ten, action to approve claims for payment. I'm sorry, number nine, actually approved March ARPA salary transfers.
All right, so this is our last ARPA uh transfer from the dollars that were received. And it's in the amount of thirty-eight thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars and thirty-six cents. It will be put back into the general fund. So if I.
And basically going towards salaries also.
Yes, yep, it's transferred from um. Yes, from the ARPA, it will go back into the general, so that way it frees up that money.
I'll move to approve that transfer.
Second by Waterman, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Please say no, that motion carries. Um, number ten, action to approve claims for payment.
Do not have any claims this week.
Budget, and we have, but we do have a budget supplement and number eleven.
Yes, and it's actually HMEP. That was my error. It's hazardous material emergency preparedness grant. In the amount of four thousand five hundred dollars. It will be an automatic budget supplement back into. The emergency management budget.
Move to approve.
So motion by Van Dusen, second by Schwer. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, please say no, that motion carries. Uh, number twelve, action to approve personnel changes.
Yes, and we have several of those. First one is for Steve DeVille. He's a seasonal memorial park rehire. Effective date for eleven, twenty twenty-three. He is at step nine, nineteen sixty-two. Another one is Steve Rondell. He is also a rehire um. At the park from AA to BB. So BB step one is seventeen eighty-six. And his effective date will be for eleven, twenty twenty-three as well. And Jeff Jensen is also seasonal park custodian, rehire. He will start at AA number two, sixteen thirty-seven. And his effective date is for eleven, twenty twenty-three.
So motion by Johnson, sir, second. Okay, second by Waterman. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Please say no, that motion carries. Um. Number thirteen, travel requests.
Yep, one travel request for extension for each training. They'll be using their private vehicle. Um, cost of travel is vehicle mileage and meals. Um, is this can be um overtime costs can be flexed. So. And it is a budgeted item.
I'll move. Motion by Johnson. I'll second it, second by Schwer. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that motion carries. Are you certain? Uh, fourteen, any uh public notices, possible quorum of commissioners?
I might note again that all of our courthouse and county offices will be closed this Friday, Good Friday, April seventh and Easter Monday, April tenth.
I think the GOP meeting possibly tomorrow. That's, that's something I can think of. No, no crack of barrels or anything, nothing like, I can't think of anything else. So, um.
Equalization. Be next.
That's next, yeah, next Tuesday. Yeah, yeah. Okay, um, number, uh, number fifteen, old business. This might be a good point of uh Commissioner Van Dusen, if you want to give us the flood update on since you're the.
Okay.
The, the flood.
So city, county and state officials uh have can, have started to meet, uh, not started, but we've actually been meeting now for a, a couple of weeks to discuss. Uh, flood preparations for the Watertown uh up north in the upper Big, Big Sioux uh River watershed up north. Um, and yesterday we met again uh in the emergency operations center. There's about twenty-five of us that get together. Um, partnership and roles have been assigned uh in terms of who's going to be handling what. Commission uh Chair uh Gable. Sits on that representing Cottington County. Uh, I've been designated as the public information officer uh for any flooding related information. So I'll be working with the news media to put out information as it becomes available through um our ICS command structure. Uh, but basically yesterday at the meeting, we had Steve Klebo, who's a meteorologist with National Weather Service Office in Aberdeen. He was asked to provide a comparison of uh twenty nineteen to the moisture that is currently uh in the ground. So. Basically, what did twenty nineteen look like compared to where we're at today? He said that uh normal soil temperatures combined with persistent snowpack throughout the year has led to a more shallower. Uh frost level than what is normally seen in our area this time of the year. Um, and that the current frost level uh this year will allow a lot of that moisture to be absorbed into the ground, which is something that could not be done in twenty nineteen. So that will impact our water levels. Up north currently, there's anywhere between five to eight inches of moisture in the snowpack up north. And with this system that's going to be moving through uh later today and into tonight, we anticipate. Another half to three quarters of an inch of water or moisture in that snow that we're gonna, gonna see here overnight. So. Um, temperatures are expected to warm up and to the forties and fifties here uh later um this week and into next week. Which is going to melt a lot of that snow. And so we're going to see the, the river uh gauges continue to rise uh as well as uh Lake Compeska. So. Uh, just really want folks to know that we are, we are eyes on and that the um, that the. Um, ICS team and the emergency management teams are all in place and we're watching those gauges closely. Um. So, uh, weather service did tell us yesterday that there's about a ninety percent chance for moderate flooding at the Broadway Street gauge. That's the gauge that's located behind Little River City. And um. Flooding occurs when that hits uh, moderate flooding occurs when that gauge hits eleven feet, so eleven point zero feet. And they anticipate uh seeing that here uh within the next uh a couple of weeks. So. Uh, what that means for the city of Watertown is that areas such as uh Fourth Avenue Southwest, down by Riverside Park. Uh, we could see uh some areas over by Kemp Avenue begin to flood and, and uh Tenth Avenue will most likely be underwater. Um, you know, portions of Tenth Avenue uh by Prairie Lake. So. Flooding's nothing new to our community. We've dealt with this in the past and we'll deal with this, but. Right now, um, as it sits, we're looking at moderate flooding um in those, in those areas. So, um. But I guess, Mister Chair, um, to your point is that uh the, the team is in place and, and we're watching it closely. So. No need to, to cry wolf at this time, but we are watching it closely because of the amount of moisture in the snow up north. So.
No, thanks. Excellent. So, okay. Um, number, any other old business? So number sixteen, new business, any new business anybody would like to mention? None uh open, so I don't think we have any comments from the public. Any other commissioner comments about anything? I did get a notice from, just to kind of put the word out, um, kind of, this is a, from the Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources. Um, about South Dakota's free abandoned underground tank removal program that's been in existence for. Uh, quite a while now, and they're just asking for help getting the word out. So if anybody's got a, an underground fuel tank um. That they want to get rid of, there are, there is state assistance available. There's an application process. So um you can talk, uh, talk to the uh DA and R of the state about that. So. They, they, they just asked for help in getting the word out because it's, the program's been around for a while, but they don't want people to forget about it. Any other commissioner comments? Okay, so. I don't think we have a need to go into executive session.
Move to adjourn.
So we got a motion to adjourn from Bishop Van Dusen, second from, from Bishop Schwer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Please say no. We are adjourned.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great week.